I think I was supposed to call and be in order first.
It's all right. It's all good, it's Monday.
It's understood.
Again, it's Monday.
Good job, Brett.
Lauren was in traffic and I got off.
Can we get you a cup of coffee or something?
Okay, item number two, approval of the minutes from April 24th and the April 24th special meeting.
I have an approval.
Second?
All in favor? First, selectmen's comments, I'll reserve that for later. Citizens comments? Go. Want to use the mic? Thank you.
My name is Joe Walker, 39 Steppingstone Lane, Madison. I'm here to speak in support of the Arts Barn Roofing Project. And I know there was some discussion in the last meeting about that project. And I wanted to just add a few comments about what we do at the Arts Barn and why this project's important to us. Most of you know about the Arts Barn and what we do, which is we offer a programming for kids in this town who really past middle school don't have a great deal of opportunity in the performing and visual arts. So we want to run programs that range from theater to we're doing an entirely student-run, student-funded, they go out and get their own sponsorship, and student-produced TV series called Unfocused, which has won a grant and is a co-production with Madison Public Access Cable. So that building's very busy. On any day of the week, there can be two to three different functions going on with a lot of kids running around. Since 2000, the Arts Barn has served 62,000 kids going through this town. It's a lot of kids. Since 2000, we probably bailed about 62,000 gallons of water out of that building. It's been, it's been an ongoing challenge. The roof's always been a problem. I've been on the board for seven years now, I think, and I've spent most of that seven years managing facilities-type issues like the roof. We need to give these kids a great space to excel in. Some of our kids are now doing professional work. They're on Broadway, they're in TV series, they're in commercials. So safe space means two things to me. It's a space where it's inclusive programming, where everybody gets a shot at things. But it also means a space where it's clean and neat, it's functional, and our volunteers spend their time focused on the kids, not focused on cleaning up spills and putting out trash cans to catch water. We're also sort of running on borrowed time. Personally, I beg borrow and steal from people I know in the industry. Equipment ranging from computers to sound reinforcement equipment to recording gear. It's quite expensive, and they trust me, and so they let our kids use state-of-the-art equipment. At some point, that's going to get rained on. We've already had our large-screen TV rained on inside the building. So I know that there's a little bit of fatigue. When Tom pulled us all together as a board and told us that a contractor had stepped forward and offered to do a partial roofing job at a lower cost with some sort of warranty, we all sort of jumped on and said, "Good goodness, we might be able to focus on something else other than the roof." But as we step back a little and looked at our responsibilities as far as stewardship of the building and stewardship for these kids and their programs, we've realized that we really, we'd like to speak out in support of the full project as originally approved by the board with the understanding that that likely will require some sort of special appropriation to make up the difference that's emerged because of the extended amount of time. Any of you who may have looked back on the records of the board will see that this has been on the books forever. It's had two studies done, and some of the money that would have gone into that roof got burned up by architectural and engineering work that needed to be done. There's three layers, roof on there, they need to come off, the whole thing really needs to be done. And our kids have worked hard enough to show us that they deserve this. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other citizen comments? Okay, move hearing none, I'll move forward. Number five, discuss and take action to retain the services of Milano and Wannett LLC as attorneys to represent the town of Madison in assessment appeal cases that may be filed for the October 1st, 2015 grant list.
So moved.
Second?
Yes, there's a typo, it should be the 2016 grant list, not the 2018.
Sorry about that. Well, we're thinking ahead.
Yeah, no, we're thinking behind. We've already done those. Sure, we've worked with this firm for the last 10 years. They have not gone up on their pricing for the last 10 years. It would be our recommendation to continue with them. They have a great working relationship with Orietta, and obviously always keep the best interest of the towns in the forefront. So I suggest we continue with them. We don't know if we have any, they have till the end of the month. We have one so far, one appeal. So we have to have an attorney onboard so that they can represent us, and they start going filings right away, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Are we, hire attorneys, this is a newbie question, sorry. Are we subject to three quotes? Do we have to get three quotes, or does it not matter?
We can do whatever we want. This is a relationship we've had for a long time, and this is, usually there are a lot of, you know, this is, we're winding down because it's a couple of years after the rebound, so.
Right, so we did our, 2013 was our rebound. We started with like 40, we had 41 cases, and then you always get those cases that come between in that five years until you do the next rebound. So last year we had five. The year before that, I think we had about seven. So right now we have one for this, so, and then we're doing our rebound for 2018, so then that cycle will start all over again.
I think, I think my suggestion would be after, or subject to the rebound, we should, you know, go out then at that point, because that's when there would be a lot of cases to be.
Goes back up, it follows it.
Right, yes.
Okay, very good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve the hiring of Christine Lele to the position of assessment technician one located within the assessor's office.
So moved.
Second?
I'm just going to finish your units. Position is exempt, rate of pay is 16.46 per hour. Position is budgeted, not requiring appropriation of funds. Position vacancy was created by a new budgetary, new budgeted position. And I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the hiring of Edward Bethke Jr. to the position of part-time communications dispatcher located within the police department, contingent upon completion of a background investigation. Position is union, rate of pay is 19.89 per hour. Position is budgeted, not requiring appropriation of funds, and the position vacancy was created by resignation.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Is there any risk of without the back, doing it prior to a background check? Are we, okay, is that standard? I saw that, yeah. Is there any risk in?
Always a risk.
Okay.
Number nine, update from the Salt Meadow Park.
I never said aye, so.
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight. Number eight, thank you. Discuss and take action to promote Brian Marks to position of equipment operator, public works, step one. 23, 33 per hour, key to block number 443. This is the fellow vacancy created by the internal promotion of the superintendent of highway. Funds are available within the department's budget.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, update from the Salt Meadow Park Governance Committee regarding the state lands of Route 1 in Salt Meadow Park.
As you know, we got the land transferred to us, and along with that, I sent you all memo regarding survey maps that were completed, um, when was that? In 2014, and the map noted several areas along the property line where there are some encroachments from the tenants, and I think we need to contact 5M Realty, who's the owner of the parcel, to try to work out some cleanup efforts. Because some, there's fire pits, there's decks that are over the property.
Oh, really? Okay.
Not at Route 1, but within the park, so. So it's going to be problematic.
On the west side?
On the west side, yes. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, that we, and the committee feels that we should address it too, to let it carry on now that we have ownership.
Sure, okay. So it's specifically on that piece?
Yes.
I could also sit on that committee. One other thing to note, if you drive by, you'll see those residents have taken it upon themselves, or those tenants have taken it upon themselves, to blaze their own private little road through that property, which goes right through the naturally occurring grasses there. So in this parcel that belongs to the town now, that's supposed to be part of a larger park area that's preserving the natural flora and fauna, you've got this little roadway they decided to make.
Next, they want to pay.
Mike, do I understand correctly that for this second approachment, that we're putting some fencing up?
That's in the CIP, if the budget passes, yes. It'll be going out towards the gas station.
Will we be asking 5M to deal with that second approachment situation as well?
Well, I think, I think that will get taken care of with the fencing. There's not going to be a way to get through there. So they're going to have to go into their property proper, properly through the, through the development.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving on, number 10, discuss and take action to approve the purchase of 16-passenger two-wheel chair bus, Machine Services. Total purchase price is $63,850. Funds in the amount of $51,080 are from Section 53, 10 grant from the state DOT. Funds in the amount of $12,770 are from the 16, 17 CIP.
So moved.
Second?
Austin's here, you want to?
Sure.
We got some extra stuff today, backup information.
So it's a grant that we went for more than a year ago. We received notification we were approved and then waited a long time for this procurement meeting that I went to a couple of weeks ago, where you meet with the approved vendor, who is Matthew Bus Company. So the money comes, actually comes from the federal budget, the FTA, and they funnel it through the DOT to give out to folks. It's a great bus, we are, we are in need of vehicles. Our buses are all, all past their useful life. We purchased two of them from the Greater Hidden Transit last year for a very small amount of money. Now, we're just, we're knocking on wood and hoping that, you know, we can make it through. There is another bus in the budget if the budget passes in a couple of weeks. This one, we won't see this bus, unfortunately, the one that we're talking about today, until at the earliest the fall. So it takes a while, I guess.
Is that because they're making it?
So they're all custom, yeah. But I guess the state has to put project numbers, like project ID numbers, everything, and they haven't even done that yet, and that takes some time, according to the DOT. At least we'll be ready to go when they are.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss the Shoreline Greenway Trail Grant, including grant information, next steps in the public hearing schedule. Mike, I think we had left this with you at the last meeting to come up with some kind of a timeline as far as moving forward. Not as far as the public hearings in particular, just the other, you know.
The, the schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't completed the schedule, but I can't. See, we know, we know what it is. We've done a schedule in the past, so we just have to. It's probably, it's a good year, probably a year plus probably in total time to get through the state and DOT process.
I think we're going to need to just start to firm that up so we can let them, you know, subject to the letter that I had sent about the grant, you know, extending it.
Yeah, that's easy to do. And then regarding public hearings, the concept plan is done, it just needs to be pretty out of it for presentation purposes, but it's the concept, you know, the concept plan is ready.
So we should talk about a schedule for, I think we need at least a couple of public hearings on this to get, you know, let people understand what's going on.
Can I speak? There've already been two public hearings, you know, in connection with this grant in town.
Okay, but I don't think anything fit about this new route.
Well.
Correct, that's correct.
At least they did, they involved the whole works in town.
But this segment, you know, this.
Not this segment, this segment, no.
Yeah, there hasn't, and, right, together, to my, not to my, my revelation, there hasn't been a specific public here, you know, public information on this particular, the details of this segment.
No, not at all.
Okay, so I'd like to propose that we schedule at least the first one for early June. If that's not unreasonable, give us time to get stuff put together.
What is the grant time? Do we have a timeline or a date, a deadline that we have to meet for the grant?
Not at this point. They notified us that we need to start moving to do something on it. So we, we're not in danger of losing it at this point, but that's subject to us doing what we're doing now, who we're talking about.
Giving them the schedule. Yeah, and I think the weather's subject to committee to the schedule.
That there's no submission date that they have to submit, aye?
The schedule?
Yeah, for the, for, to procure the grant.
No, no, we have, we have the grant to maintain the funding to keep it. We just, we have to submit a schedule, which we could, honestly, we can submit tomorrow. Like I said, it's been prepared in the past, it just needs to be stepped forward.
So.
What will we have available at the public hearing?
That's, well, that's what I want to, why I want to give it like a month before.
So we're going to have a, a map and a route and all this?
I think, I think we'd like to Shoreline Greenway Trail people to give a presentation, you know, because, I mean, to get this whole thing started up again. And then Mike can also be there. But in the meantime, we can hopefully get this out in the press so that people in town will know and be able to come to the meeting.
Mike, could you review the gentlized steps that have to take place over the next year?
Sure, so, so right now, as we described in the past, all we've done is a conception.
Can you use the microphone?
Yeah.
It's a game show.
Keep it close.
Turn this volume so that it's.
Yeah. I think we need to go.
I was under. So as I described in the past, we, we have a concept plan for the route, which is on the south side of Route 1 from the East River, the bridge at the Guilford Town Line, easterly through the underpass at Nathan's Lane to the intersection of Nathan's Lane. All on the south side. And so we have a conceptual plan for that. Prior to this public hearing, we'll need to, like I was saying earlier, do some work on it graphically to make it more presentable for a public information meeting. And then the real steps to, to move forward in the project are to, we, we have to work out, the state process requires that we work out a scope of work with a consultant that we chose. We had started that on the previous route, so we'll need to pick it up again for this section. And then it has to be approved by the state. There's a, there's a definitive process that the state has laid out for this. And once, once that's approved and we sign contract with the consultant, we will begin. We're, we're going to do the majority of the design, and the consultant will be doing some of the design work, so we'll be working together. We've got to go through the design process, which requires periodic submissions to DOT and review. For instance, at the 30% stage, they, they need to review it. And all that, the DOT's process, especially their review, the reviews take, take time. So the goal is to bring it, the original goal is to bring it through the preliminary design phase to add enough detail to the design to have a better cost estimate, and have a more refined design, have a more refined cost estimate, so that we know what the project will cost. From there, we'll have to make decisions about how we move forward. Whether we'll move forward, whether there's enough funding, whether we'll have to seek additional funding, whether, whether we move, whether we move forward or, or not. So that, that's going to take a good year, a good year, a long, because of the state, mostly because of the state concept.
Mike, do we need to be concerned about any land acquisition to do this?
We think, based on the concept plan, we, we think that there may be easement acquisitions. It may not be a take, where we actually acquire title to land, but where we, where we seek, where we ask permission for the grant of an easement to the town. But, so yes, based on the concept plan, yes.
And will those areas be identified when we have the meeting?
Yes.
Mike, does this public information session only cover the segment that you described from the Guilford line to Nathan's Lane, or will it cover the entire transit across Madison?
I think, I think, now, I think that, I think we need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, what killed it in Guilford was the fact that they had the one area, route that they had planned on going on, but people in Guilford were afraid of where else it was going to go. So I think we need to, we need to.
Manage, manage expectations.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so the public information, I don't think we ought to start out with a little history and go back and, and show the public that this study was done and what the alternate, alternatives were for the route through Madison, and that this is only a segment of an overall, an overall plan. Not only through Madison, but through, you know, from East Haven to Madison.
I would, I would add that it should also talk about not only the, the construction parts of it, but also the ongoing maintenance, you know, where, where that all is going to rest in the long term. So I, as much as information out as early as possible so that we don't get ambushed, we don't, we don't run into some of the troubles that.
Yeah, I think the only thing I think we should do is in advance of the public hearings, we should notify the property owners along the way. So that, you know, let them know the public hearing coming up and that their property would be involved and, you know, that kind of stuff.
We, we always do that, actually. We write letters, I sign every one of them, we write letters to everybody who fronts it. We go, we typically go several hundred feet, you know, on either end too.
Okay, so you do that at one point, huh?
Well, I, I try to send those letters out a month, a month early to give people time.
Right, to the public hearing?
Yeah, and then we advertise it, you know, we'll put it on the town's website. We put it, we usually put an ad in the source also.
Okay, so if we want to schedule a public hearing for June, I'd like to do it, you know, fairly early in June. Maybe if, if we could get those letters out by May 15th, and we could schedule a public hearing like middle of June, that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
So about Tuesday the 13th?
For the public hearing, what do you say?
I'm going to propose, yeah, I'm going to propose that as a date.
Does it, are you going, just a, there's just a thought, does it conflict with any, you know, border commission meeting? Tuesday is CDA maybe, I mean, it's on Tuesday.
Or a little, I don't know if that's a border event meeting, maybe not, but we can check, but. Yeah, we'll check. So let's, let me propose the 13th, and then we'll make sure that we don't have any major conflicts.
Give or take a few days.
All right?
Does that work for the New York?
We will be here whenever you do it.
But you've got, that's enough time for you to prepare for a presentation?
Yeah, I've been ready for this for about 10 years.
Anything further? Anybody?
No.
Okay. Number 12, update on the town campus baseball field project. Mike?
So the, the, we had talked at the last meeting a week ago, I guess it was. Couple of days after that meeting, the fence top protection, the wall padding system was delivered. They'll see them when you leave, in the big boxes and crates on the right when we drive out. The fencing has been, fencing in gates and follow pole, follow poles have been completed, except for the eight-foot-high fencing in front of the dugouts. The contractor's waiting for us to order the holes for the tension netting system, so he won't, that fencing won't be in the way. And a corner on the left field line of the fencing at one of the follow poles been left out, so Scott's guys can have access to work on the warning track. We, we had an issue with acquiring, getting a building permit issued last week, and that with the rain, the forecasted rain, we, we decided to put off the installation of the poles, the tabback tension netting system poles, to this week. And I was in communication with the contractor yesterday and really this morning, they're calling this Wednesday to do that work. And can you, can you speak, Scott, about, about winter?
We're going to be back, we rented a tailor, and that is arriving at some point today. So we're going to be starting to move material onto the warning track after we fix the irrigation line that was hit, as well as, we have to replace a swing joint on one of the heads that we hit when we were grading down to create the warning track. But that should be all done this morning.
Has the, has the irrigation problem been identified?
We're, we're zeroing in on what we think it is. We, we have a feeling that there may be dirt and accelerinoids sticking open. So it may be very simple, so we're going to be looking at that this morning, so.
So it's not a cut line, you mean?
We don't think so. So we're going to be working on that today, so.
That's good news.
Anybody? Moving forward, update on the Arts Barn Roof Replacement Bids. He did open those bids a week ago, Friday, right?
28.
You want to talk about this one?
Sure, so we, as Tom said, we opened the bids on the, on the 28th, and the apparent low bidder is Rivers End. Sorry, I'm looking for the, did some errors. So the, both myself and the, and the architect reviewed the apparent low bidder's Rivers End Construction LLC bid submission and find that it's all in order. And the architect checked, the architect has worked with this company before and checked his references, and has also checked that he's licensed to install one of the three type manufacturer, type manufacturers of the roofing system that we're talking about specified. So it, it appears at this point that, that Rivers End Construction is qualified over there.
Where are they from?
Westbrook.
So what, what's our next steps here?
Well, I think we need to find out if we can get the, I mean, these prices, this lowest price came in very low relative to what we've had been told before this job might cost. So Mike and I talked about the possibility of bidding out the side of separately, see if we can get a lower price on that and still come within the budget.
Do we, do we need to do these, do we need to link the two? Is there a way to get one started at least and then, and then follow through on the second? Or is the preference to, to link all of the work together?
I would think if we're going to do the steep slope shingle portion, that we ought to, if we're, if we're going to put it out to bid, that, that in the bidding documents, we ought to, we're going to, you know, we can't, you know, we've got two separate projects, so all we can do now, I think, would be to, in the bidding documents, have enough language in there that indicates that the second contractor might be Rivers End and might not be, you know, has to coordinate, has to understand and coordinate with, with the first contractor for the low slope portion of it. That's really all we can do.
Is it possible, is it possible for us to waive the bid and you can negotiate the second part of the roof with the current contractor?
You could, I suppose, because it's town funds only and subject to your pervious regulations. However, it's possible, it's possible that, it's not out of the realm of possi- of possibility that the whole project might be subject to prevailing wage requirements. There's $100,000 threshold in this instance for reconstruction.
But we've divided it into two projects.
Doesn't matter, can't, the state doesn't recognize that. It's more of a building, so. So you might, I would, I would think you might want to get advice from town council on that. I believe, my, to my knowledge, you can, you, the board of selectmen, because this is not state or federal money and subject to only our Madison's procurement regulations, that you could waive the bidding process. It may, there may be some fallout from that with all the other contractors, and you might, my recommendation is you might want to talk to town council.
But it's possible for us to do that and negotiate the second part of the roof.
Like I said, I think it may be, but I would, I'd feel more comfortable if we talked to town council. I do think there will be some fallout, because remember, we bid this, the complete project back in late fall.
What was the low bid at that point?
Eighty-nine thousand with a $9,000 additive alternate in case there were difficulties removing existing roofing material. There was a provision in there to remove it by a more labor-intensive process, so as to not damage the deck.
Right.
So can I ask a question? So given that point right there, what new information do we have to be asking for new bids, given that the board of selectmen voted on something in December, the roof was awarded to a contractor? What new information do we have to now decide that we're going to go a different route? Do we have new information?
Just these prices.
What was the necessity of the new prices?
The budgeted amount didn't cover.
Why did you award it in the first place?
I'm still uncomfortable. We went through the whole process, the CIP process, the board of selectmen process, to replace the whole roof. It was based on an outside consultant's expert opinion that the whole roof needed to be replaced. I haven't heard any expert opinion that only a partial roof replacement needs to be done. So I still feel that we budgeted for the whole roof, and we approved doing the whole roof, and I haven't heard any information to tell me that we should only do part of the roof. That's what I'm listening for right now.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to avoid a special appropriation. I'm trying to keep this within the amount of money that we have. And I'm trying to get more information that'll tell us whether or not we can do that. And so when we went out to bid on this one, we found out that relative to a quote that we had before, this is a lot, a lot lower price. And I'd just like to explore the fact that our ability to do this within the amount of funds that we have, given that we still haven't heard anything from the state relative to what's going to happen at budget time. And we could be looking at, you know, additional tax bills going out. We could be looking at all kinds of things. I'd like to just try to hold everything down as much as possible. That's the whole point of all the things I'm doing, is trying to hold all of our spending down to within what we have, so that we have that reserve.
I appreciate that, Tom, and I applaud you for that. I'm still stuck on the fact that we've looked to an outside consultant who knows more about roofs than the five of us, and that consultant said, you need to do the whole roof. And I understand there are fiscal constraints that we're scrambling to cover, but I'm looking for someone to tell me that it's okay to do only part of the roof.
It's not unusual to phase roofs in in two pieces.
Mike did talk to the architect. He said it would be okay to do that.
Then why didn't we make a decision back in December to either hold the bid and do it differently, or acquire this information in advance of approving that in December? I guess I'm struggling with, why wasn't this due diligence done upfront? And you guys voted. I'm, you guys, because I wasn't involved. But I guess I'm surprised that the constraints, the same constraints of cost and concern were there in December as they are now. So I guess, what's new? Well, I think, you know, this is a case of upon reflection, right? We all, the four of us, thought that it would be fine to approve a project that we hadn't fully funded, and we would just go and ask for a special appropriation for it. I think, you know, upon reflection, what I'm hearing from Tom is, he said, well, maybe we can find a better way to do this project, and took the initiative to try to be responsible with taxpayer money. I don't hear a debate about the whole roof, okay? I hear a debate about how can we accomplish the whole roof within the budget amount allotted. And so my comment about, you know, do we segment them, is not to defer indefinitely the second part, but to get something going on this. I think that ideally, if it's a matter of weeks, or if we have a mechanism to negotiate the full project without bid, that we should do it, and we should do it all at once. If you've got to rip the whole thing off, just rip the whole thing off and get it done. If the second part of the roof is now another 120 days to sort out, well, let's at least get part of it done.
Well, and the problem, the problem is that what we've been fixing is the flat. That's what's been leaking. That's what we keep fixing, you know, patching. That's why I figured if we do the flat roof, at least we stop the leaking, and then we figure out how we get the rest of it done. And we could do it, could end up doing it as, you know, as a continuation of this job, but we've got to stop the water from running into that building.
Right, but didn't an expert say that the entire roof needed to be done and needed to be done now? I guess that's what I'm, I'm struggling with.
No, he did say we could do it in two pieces.
The expert told us we could do it in two pieces? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not. His rec, I think I told you all this, his recommendation is that we do it all at once, that the steep slope shingled portion of the roof is, there's three layers on the roof, and it's at its life expectancy. However, he said, I asked him, you know, can we do it despite your, you know, your initial thoughts, can we do it separately? And he said, yes. He said it would likely, as I've told you, Paul, I think it would likely cost us more money because we're mobilizing contractors twice. And there's the issue of the interface of the steep slope portion where that meets the flat portion, but he believes we can cover that in contract document language.
I guess I'm looking for a way forward that gets the whole roof done at the lowest cost. And Tom, I beg your mind, my guess is we're all interested in that.
Right. And I think that, you know, one of the methods we have is we see what it costs to negotiate with the current successful bidder to do the whole roof. And you can do that informally. You don't have to go through a whole bid process, and you can get a price from that. And then if that's the way we want to go, we can waive the bidding and do that.
You talking about the vendor that you awarded in December?
No, the one, the low bidder now for the flat roof.
Like, why, I guess I'm, back to, back to the one in December.
Because it was over budget.
I understand, but are we able to negotiate with that vendor?
Not, not a bad, right? No, we can't, we cannot go back to the previous low bidder on the first project. We can, we cannot do that. I know that for sure. I'll say again, I think, I think we should get any from town council on even negotiating with this bidder. And I'm afraid there will be flaws. I have, I have to say that.
Blown from the other vendors?
From all the bidders, because you, I mean, think about it from their perspective. It's not quite, you know, we put out, we advertised the complete roof replacement. Normal process, we awarded a contract. We voted to award a contract, we signed a contract, entered into agreement. And then we, then we split the project, and we advertised for the flat portion only. And all the, most of the same companies bid on the first project in this piece, you know, when they, if, I would imagine, if they got wind of that, or now going to possibly negotiate with the flat roof portion only, apparent low bidder, to have him do the steep portion, that they may not, there may be some flaw.
Who was the vendor that we?
Did anybody complain when we, when we went out for bid the second time? Did any of these bidders come back to us and complain about?
A little bit, but nothing, you know, because that's not, not out of the ordinary, you know, a town, a municipality, we've done this in the past, can, you know, can cancel a bid, you know, even to the point of rejecting all the bids. There's language in the contract documents that allows us to do that. This was a little, a little different. We, you know, we just, we decided to do the flat portion only. This situation would be a little different. We did that.
Where's the vendor in moving?
What's, I'm sorry. I think it's dying, actually. Batter's died. Yeah, it's not, I think the battery's dead, actually. This is a little different because, you know, breaking, you know, canceling the first project and going out for the flat portion only is okay. But now, to add to it, to try, to negotiate, to bring the steep slope portion back in, I'm afraid there might be some fallout. That's not, I think it's fair to say that it's not typical practice.
Was the vendor that we awarded it in December, are they one of the new, who are they?
Streamline, Streamline Roofing Services, they're also.
And was there any fallout or discussion with the scope change with them? Was there a concern?
Just disappointment, because he thought he had a project, but he understood, he understood. Like I said, a town's municipalities, you know, can, can, because of funding limitations, can do what we do.
Did Rivers End bid on the first one?
They did.
Tom, can I ask you again to describe how you see moving forward and getting the whole roof done? I understand you want to do it in two pieces now. Could you just describe that?
Well, I think, I think the first thing I'd like to do is, like Mike suggested, about our attorney, make sure that we're safe moving forward. And then, based on that, like Bob suggested, we have a discussion with Rivers End, or do what is next suggested. Worst-case scenario is that we have to wait a while and then do it when we have the money, because we appropriated it in a new budget. I'm just trying to avoid special appropriations as much as possible while we're in the situation we are with the state.
Is there a way that we can get a commitment? I don't know how that process might work, but can we commit as a board of selectmen to the entire roof, you know, pending, staying under budget of the amount that was in CIP?
But, you know, if we can, if we can talk to, if the attorney says it's okay for us to start to negotiate, we should do that, see what we can, what we find out. If we find out that these people are hungry enough, that they want to come in under our number, you know, what we did with the strong center holdings was we basically said to the bidders, here's our budget, you got to come in under it. If you can't, tell us what you have to take out of the project to make it work. So if we can go back to these people and say, here's our budget, so you can come in under it, then it's up to them, you know, to let us know if they can do it with what we have. Otherwise, we might have to put off that section until we put more money in the budget next year, but we'll do it knowing what's going on with this budget.
How is the budget defined? I mean, it just seems like maybe the budget was wrong to start with. I think it kind of was. You know, again, we approved the project and then didn't fully fund it. We were, I think we're rechanning the state legislature in that.
We're beginning to act like the state of Connecticut.
We don't want to do that.
Sure.
So, that's what I, I mean, I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer, because we talked to attorney, you know, messed up. But I mean, you can, I can certainly give you an update as soon as I know.
But it sounds like there's a rousing kind of consensus here to do the entire roof if we can do it in the context of the budget. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So would it be fair to ask for some sort of concrete update in the next?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. In the meantime, we approved the award of $22,000.
No, we're not going to, this was just to discuss it. And, you know, it's on the table now, so.
But we do have a pathway to get something done.
We do.
Whether it be the flat roof to begin with, or whether we do the whole project with another vendor or something, but we have a, we have a bid for the flat roof, which is the worst leak. We don't want our volunteers having a mop up model.
Their TV's broken.
Hardened up. Okay, number 14, tax abatements and refunds. What's a pop question?
I move that we approve tax abatement of refunds in the amount of $2,197.53.
True, second. Anybody have any comments or objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, citizens' comments. Number 11 is after number 14. So I'll call it 50.
It's a new number, 50.
Hearing none. We want to liaison report the selectmen comments. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. No report. That was easy. I got to think whether I have reports. Start down there.
Bruce, you got anything?
So I'm liaison to inland wetlands, and they are involved in what has become a contentious interaction between some residents and the land trust. And my comment on this and my observation is, is that the commission has conducted themselves with great professionalism. I've been present for the meetings that are around this subject and can't say that they couldn't have done anything more or done it better to represent the town of Madison. So it's unfortunate that this issue has become contentious, but I can't say enough good things about the work that they're doing.
Alan, you got anything?
No updates from me.
Okay, Scott?
I guess no liaison updates. I guess I'm, I'm still thinking about this meeting that we had last week, the baseball community meeting. And I'm frankly a little disappointed, and I'm a little embarrassed that the board of selectmen had to get involved in a construction project, as pointed out by Selectman Goldberg. And I'm, I'm hopeful that as we're, as we're intending to get the Arts Barn roof done, that are also, is our intent to get the baseball field done. And.
It's our stated intent.
I think, yeah, and I, and I'm hopeful that we do it the right way. And I hope that the board of selectmen are able to get out of the way and let this project proceed as it should.
I don't think we've been in the way, but.
I was going to say, I take nubrid, well, it's being in the way. I think that we're trying to facilitate this and stay within budget.
The only thing I have is, on Saturday, our health department put on their first health walk and talk. We had 30 people show up, which, from what they tell me, is not a bad showing, especially for our first attempt at this. But part of the remit of the health department in each town is to educate people. And so on Saturday, they had a three-hour walk and talk where they had, at nine o'clock, they had a couple speakers, and at 10 o'clock, a couple more, and then at 11 o'clock, a couple more. And so, and the idea was that they would walk along and talk with these people, and they did the Shore Island Greenway Trail section reminiscent of State Park. So while it was a good turnout, I would like to encourage everybody to go from now on when we do these. And we'll publicize them, so that everybody knows about them. But it was really, it was, I went to the 11 o'clock one. The sun just happened to come out and I wanted to wrap.
Funny how it works.
Pretty nice way it worked out, so.
Another torn final ordinance, right?
Yeah, exactly.
The sunshelter's time.
That's all I got. So I will listen to a motion to adjourn to a second in session.
Shall I move?
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.